We're releasing the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The consent agenda, put in your pockets.
Second.
Motion by Bell, second by Jorgensen to approve the consent agenda. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. All right, first up, scheduled session, Matt Wyatt, Director, Planning and Development, second consideration of ordinance number 2024-06, an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of Potawatomi County, Iowa by changing the district designation of approximately 5.0 acres from a Class R-2 urban transitional to a Class C1 highway commercial district. And we had the public hearing and the first consideration on this ordinance last week.
Correct, this is still for continuation of that project just resides just to the east of Avoca. Eighty-three for what will be a commercial, kind of a commercial stable.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. The highway's six, ain't it? And then the nine.
No, eighty-three.
Eighty-three?
Yeah, coming out of Avoca, east out of Avoca, you go past where, if you come out of Avoca, you go past their swimming pool area and stuff.
Oh, okay, headed toward, uh.
Walnut.
Walnut, yeah.
Okay, I'm with you. I don't know why I thought it was on fifty-nine. Okay.
Additional discussion? Got a motion by Shay and a second by Bell. All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, this is a roll call.
Yeah.
Becky, please call the roll.
Chairperson Miller?
Aye.
Supervisor Rickman?
Aye.
Supervisor Bell?
Board.
Kay?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, we have Matt Wyatt, Director, Planning and Development, second consideration of ordinance number 2024-07, an ordinance to amend Potawatomi County, Iowa zoning ordinance, Chapter 8.045 Highway Commercial District, and to adopt ordinance number 2024-07 into law. And again, we held the public hearing on this last week and had the first reading.
I'll move. Second.
By Shay, second by Jorgensen. Is there additional discussion? Becky, will you call the roll, please?
Chairperson Miller?
Aye.
Supervisors Jorgensen?
Bell.
Shay?
Aye.
Wickman? Thank you.
Period. Thank you, Matt, and Pam for your work on that. All right, next, Matt Wyatt, Director, Planning and Development, discussion and/or decision to approve final plat of Stony Brook East Phase One, a subdivision situated in Lewis Township, and to sign planning and zoning resolution number 2024-07.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Bell and a second by Shay. Now, I brought up yesterday the naming on the street conventions. Is this when I talked about that?
I think that was the next.
The next one?
Yeah.
You have to do that before we approve the final plat?
This is gonna take, that is true. There's probably, if there's something on there that you want to discuss for change, you should do it before you accept the final plat, yes.
So in the, in the Stony Brook, this subdivision, Stony Brook Drive, Stony Brook is all one word. And when we approved the original plat back in the May, I believe, Stone Ridge Court, Stone Ridge was all one word. And now on this plat that we're going to approve today, Stone Ridge Lane, spell that in two words. And I think for a naming convention and consistency and for ease of EMS and UPS and FedEx, we ought to have them the same. I don't know if there's a reason that they're different.
Okay, so Stone Ridge Court, I mean, I don't, do you want me to speak?
Go ahead.
Stone, Stone Ridge Court was, what you approved was a different subdivision. That was Wayne Peterson, uh.
Off of Mc, off of McPherson.
RMP LLC.
So they're not even connected?
No.
Oh, that's my big mistake.
And Stone Ridge Lane, two words, is how it was shown on the preliminary plat. So I think maybe there's just confusion as to which subdivision the Stone Ridge Court was in.
It only has one street on.
I know.
Subdivision.
Do you think there'll be confusion for EMS having a Stone Ridge Lane on one side of town and a Stone Ridge?
Uh, we sat down and discussed, because in the past, there, we know that there was an instance in a road name actually wound up getting changed afterwards. But with today's technology, when, as the houses are permitted and the foundations are coming up, we go out and we GPS the corners of the home, and then we GPS a driveway location. That gets fed in through Jamie's system, which ties in all of the fire, EMS, sheriff's office. So when somebody, if a caller from that address were to come or to call in and they punch in that address, it automatically pings to that GPS location of the driveway point.
Good with that, but it should really be like Stony Brook Ridge Lane, but in my, in my development, so I'm okay with it as is. Everything's GPS anymore, every little thing.
Well, and Pam and I did go back to the, to the code to look for guidance on just road names in general and how that, that is done. And I'd sent Susan a couple of different sections, like the first section was that it gets laid out during preliminary plat. But, and then there was one last section that the board kind of has final say on being able to change anything for acceptance of it, so.
Okay, with it?
I, I think it's gonna be confusing. But that's the school.
I, I'm okay with it, but like, like you said, I think there is gonna be some confusion. There's old schools, people out there too, like me, and that go by, other than GPS, that kind of thing. So Stone Ridge Lane is not in Stone Ridge, that we're understanding?
Stone Ridge, Stone Ridge, one word, Court, is in a previous final plat, that the board.
Stone, two words, Stone Ridge Lane is a different entity, a different.
That is Johnny Brook, the one you're approving today, yeah.
Are they both in Lewis Township's Fire Department? I can't remember.
I would assume so, yeah.
It's, yeah.
It's gonna be confusing.
Well, I would say Peterson's may be a trainer.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, I, I don't have any issues with it. I don't want to get into certain naming roads. Do we have Mr. Spring? Do we have Mr. Street? I mean, your name has got them all, so I just call them both. We have a resolution on the.
Yeah, the next.
That's the first one.
Yep.
Okay, so we have a motion by Bell and a second by Shay to approve the final plat of Stony Brook East Phase One. All right, Becky, will you call the roll, please?
Chairperson Miller?
Aye.
Supervisors Bell?
Aye.
Wickman?
Aye.
Shay?
Aye.
Jorgensen?
Aye.
Next, we have Matt Wyatt, Director, Planning and Development, discussion and/or decision to approve and authorize board to sign resolution number 60-2024, resolution to add roadway names of Stony Brook Drive and Stone Ridge Lane to the rural address map.
Right. The Stony Brook Drive is just an extension of an existing road? Right?
Yes.
Yes, but we added the range for the addresses.
Or?
Jamie added the, Jamie from GIS added the range for Stony Brook Drive to assign addresses.
Is there just, uh, are there two lots coming off of that? Or are you having all, all of the lots come off that?
Just two, potentially three.
It's two, potentially four.
Four, yeah.
Yeah.
Depending on how they lay out the house, depending on which way they, whether they want to lay it out.
Bob, can I ask you a question? You know, the, the property that's to the east of this subdivision, will that be accessed through Lot Six or off of, you know, off of 230th Street?
I have a motion by Wickman and a second by Bell to approve and authorize the board to sign resolution number 60-2024. Becky, will you call the roll, please?
Chairperson Miller?
Nag.
Supervisor Bell? Wickman?
Absolutely.
Shay?
Aye.
Jorgensen?
Aye.
Motion is carried. All right. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you, everybody.
Get, uh, you in today?
Yeah, we have other readings.
Can I get help here? Okay, there's your motto, okay? Yes, yep, good, thanks.
Good, Jason?
Good morning.
How are you?
Pretty good.
Back, he's been here. Oh, there he is.
Okay.
He should be up in the hot seat, too.
Yeah.
Here he comes.
Next up, we have Shay, Director, Buildings and Grounds, bid opening for the Courthouse North parking lot.
We have two bids today. The first one.
Do you need to make a motion to open the bids?
Um, if you'd like, yeah, I mean.
I know that question's come up before.
We'll actually take them.
Head over.
Okay, first bid is United Utilities Excavation LLC.
What was that again, United?
Uh, United Utilities and Excavation LLC. Bid bond is included. Addendum one is acknowledged. Lump sum base bid, Four-six-five, four-six-three. Second bid, Midwest DCM.
Midwest what?
D as in dogs, C as in Charlie, M. Bid bonds attached. Addendum ones acknowledged. Lump sum bid amount, $224,000. Two-two-four thousand.
That's it?
That's it, all we got? Yep.
I'll actually take it on this, Jason. I know, I believe, would you expand on it a little bit? We're still having some discussions with the city council plus on what we can or cannot do.
Yeah, we'll meet with Chris Givens on Thursday morning. Hopefully get some more information.
On Thursday mornings?
Yep, 11 o'clock.
Is, uh, depending on what, what he says, is there a chance to get it paid this year?
It sounds like, I mean, there's a small probability.
If, if we stayed with the current addendum design, yes. We want to add twenty, what is it, nineteen more spots? I don't think so.
What? If we put, if we don't, we're not able to pay, but can we put some rocks on that and use it?
We can talk to the city about it. They've let us before, so.
We did that temporarily back, I don't know, were you on there then? You probably weren't.
Well, we did it over there, I know.
Yeah, but we had to get big for missing it too.
Would, um, if something like that were to happen, when we go to pay it, do we have to remove the rock, you know?
Yeah, they'll, they'll have to, yeah.
Leave it to conservation department to write.
All right, you're meeting with them Thursday?
Yes.
Get the board close to which, please?
Sure, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Good luck with that preparation.
Thank you. Next up, Jason Slack, Director, Buildings and Grounds, discussion and/or decision on placement of the Earl Weeby Memorial Stone at the Flagpole area east of the courthouse entrance.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Bell and a second by Shay. Lee or Jason, did you talk with the family to see if they were okay with this?
I sent her a message yesterday and explained what was going on today. And she asked when the meeting was, and I said at 10:00. And I, she didn't answer if she would be coming, but she thought it was wonderful that this was going forward, so. Thank you.
You have enough dirt there, Jason, to put her in?
Yeah, yeah, there's space.
I can help dig, because I'm the one that made the fuss.
Right, we got the shovel back, leave it in your hand.
Okay, I've done it before.
You should, uh.
Excuse me?
Be with all that dress up when you do that shovel.
Do what?
You and Robin all dressed up and do the shovel.
Robin, leave him out. He doesn't know how to dress up very often.
Well, he knows how to use a shovel.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
He hands it to me, too.
All right, we have a motion by Bell and a second by Shay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
All right, next up, Lee Foss, Treasurer, discussion and/or decision on hiring pay of clerk two at step three. Morning, Lee.
Good morning. Pretty pet-dried. I had nineteen people and now I have thirteen, so to get good help. I've trained four people in the last year, maybe. And when they go to the counter, it's very challenging and very stressful. So I think I need to do something. I feel my clerks are maybe separate from the rest of the clerks because they work every day hard and we hardly ever get a break. Only, you know, maybe at four, but, so.
You, uh, uh, so are you, are you down six employees then? Um, who's, oh.
And I, and I'm hired and then I'm praying. Pardon me?
Only one of them are from retirement, the other five have.
Right.
Have chose a different.
We've trained them for four, six months and then.
Go. Can you?
And they went to other employment.
Right.
That aren't.
Sure.
Aren't fun every day, I guess, I don't know.
Uh, do you, do you, on a daily basis, is, is your equipment set up to say how many transactions as a, as a whole department you do?
Yes.
Can you, would you share those numbers with me or with the board? Okay.
We can make your product report. I can just do it, I mean, however long you want me to do it.
Right.
And it shows like how many titles are done and how many registrations are done, you know, per day, per week, per month. You know, just yesterday, you know, we go through the titles the next day. There was over two hundred and some titles ever done.
Right.
And that's a Monday. Fridays are worse. And then all the work that comes in from all the dealers, too. So it's a revolving door.
Right, that, just the subdivision.
And you can see we work every day.
Oh, no, I know.
We're not, we're not cheap.
I know. That's why I try to mail my stuff to you.
Easier.
Thank you, thank you.
I'll make the motion. What, what is that number for clerk two at step three is?
Twenty dollars and sixty cents.
Twenty sixty?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll, I'll second.
Lee, um, will this affect anybody else in the process?
No. And that's the other part, you know, I, I've had three people I've offered the job to and they've even come down from what they're making to, you know, said they would come to work, but I can't do that to my other employees that have been there for, you know, year, two years, three years, which isn't fair to them.
Lee, off the top of your head, do you know what grade twelve step one starts at?
Nineteen? Eighteen?
Not right.
Nineteen. I think after it changed in July, it started at nineteen.
Started at nineteen.
Okay.
Motion by Bell and a second by Shay to approve. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion is carried.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll go get my boots on so I can go shovel.
Well, you start working on your Christmas.
I, hey, I bought new blowups and nobody buys them but me.
Whoa.
Hey.
All right, next, Hannah Limerick, Director, Human Resources, and Melvin Hauser, Auditor, and Jenna from Payroll, discussion and/or decision to approve EBS flex spending amount effective January one, 2025, through December thirty-one, 2025, with the change to the section one-two-five IRS maximum from thirty-two hundred to the projected IRS amount for 2025 medical annual contribution.
They haven't come out with it yet.
They've come out with a projected amount, and usually that's what it is. But by the time they announce the official amount, we already have, yeah, we're past it. So that's why Jenna had the good idea to come here early and ask you to approve whatever the IRS approves. That way, we don't have to come back again, and as soon as they approve it, she's ready to go. And she's already ready to work on them for the projected amount because that is probably ninety-nine percent of the time, that's always what it is.
Motion to approve.
I'll second it. So can we put in the, the motion that this amount is projected and will, uh, how should I say that? Will end up being what is, uh, approved by IRS or something like that?
Something like that, I think that would be fine.
But you should say you improve whatever IRS approves with the understanding it will be thirty-two hundred or.
Thirty-three hundred.
Okay, thirty-three.
And that projected is in parentheses, so.
Yeah.
That should project that.
That's my motion.
Good second.
Oh, I guess, I guess, uh, I'd ask for a shade of, in his.
I would amend it as stated stat.
Thanks. We have some people that do that, uses.
Flex spending? Yes, definitely.
Do we?
Great, yeah, but our deductibles have changed.
Are they?
I said, since our deductibles have gone up.
Yeah.
A lot more people have jumped into it.
So, no, no. Training is pretty flexible.
All right, we have a motion by Shay and a second by Bell. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion is carried. All right, committee appointments. Brian, what do you have for us?
Uh, we've done a conservation, done the buildings and trade deal, uh, WIDA, at a roads department, um, their longevity awards or whatever we called it. And we were all in here for the PR interviews. Couple other things that we're taking, so. Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, I was here for the PR interview. It was very interesting. I think they're very qualified candidates supplied and forward to getting that position filled, so.
Yeah?
No.
I went to Carson, to the whiskey house. What the hell was the name of?
Judge Richard.
Judge Richard, and listened to, what was IVP or the?
PDI.
PDI. And the lobbyists for them. And, uh, some of the other elected officials were there. It's a nice event, very nice place. I'll probably be back. And then I did the interviews. And it seemed like something, yeah. It's very difficult. I need to get.
Give her a pizza, can you?
Oh, yeah, I was at the.
Building and trade.
Yeah, need to get a little book and write that stuff down.
Well, you had the policy committee, too.
Yeah, I was at the policy committee, too. Okay.
I was at the policy committee and I was at the PDI roundtable, uh, WIDA board meeting, uh, the secondary roads anniversary recognition.
What?
The MAPPA, RPA, Policy Board, Golden Hills, and the fire chiefs meeting last night. Right.
What does PDI stand for?
Professional Development of Iowa.
I'll cut out first.
First?
Fellers, developers.
It was Advanced Southwest Iowa hosted it. All right, now we're moving to the public comment section of the meeting. Typically, we ask people to sign up for public comments. Brad, did you want to speak or no? Okay. Doug, nobody signed up? Right.
Oh.
All right. Now we'll move to the study sessions.